Mics are on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We want you to speak, Ellen. It's not the same. It's not the same if you don't.
Ryan, you're in the pledge form?
Yes.
Rita, you got the prayer.
Oh, yeah.
I did one time. You want to pray again? I mean, I probably need.
Do you want to say the pledge?
Yeah.
Ryan, do you want to pray for us?
I can.
You sure? No pressure. I can pray. Okay.
No cursing. That's the thing. I mean, how you talk to God, they probably don't like me.
Welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners zoning public hearing. It is Thursday, August 25th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Bound to lead us in the invitation, followed by Commissioner Rita Johnson with a pledge of flag. Please stand.
Good Lord, thank you for bringing us all together here tonight. Please give us the strength to make the right decisions. These decisions affect many people, also protect our law enforcement, our military, our public safety hall, and protect everybody on their way home. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much for that, y'all. Public hearings. Persons desiring to speak must sign up for the appropriate application. When called, speakers must state their names and addresses and direct all comments to the board only. Speakers will be allotted three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters being considered by the Board of Commissioners on this agenda. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. Doctor.
All right. First up this evening is application 22-02Z Zulu Simpson Real Property LLC, a Georgia limited liability company. As a trustee of the L. Simpson Charitable remainder unit trust dated June 3rd, 1999, owner HFG Development LLC, agent Zero Wallace Road, approximately 53.96 acres located in the land lot 39 of the second land district, requesting to rezone to develop 100,000 square foot warehouse.
What's the, what's the, I mean, I see we on there, the Wallace Road, but where, is there a cross street or is there?
Yes, it comes off Jackson Road.
It does. So it's, is it that side that borders Jackson as well or?
Yeah, it's on, close to that side where Jackson comes into where Spalding County is.
If you'll give it just a second, we'll bring up that location map for you.
Mr. Chairman, I need to advise the board that I have represented HFG and some other rezoning matters, and I have had no part in this and recused, no part in the review of this and have recused myself from that. Ms. Littlefield has ably handled all work on this.
Oh, it's right next to.
It's right next to Dollar General.
The Doggo.
That's correct. Did you want to listen to staff first or did you want to listen to the applicant?
No, let's, let's, let's go to staff and then if.
Pull up my staff report, please.
And then we'll go to the applicant from there.
All right.
That way they sort of get the last word.
Okay, so this is an application to rezone 50. Sorry. 53.96 acres. They are currently zoned, there's a couple of parcels out here, they're currently zoned AR and R2. The applicant is requesting to zone it to C1C, not C2, but C1C, to accommodate not only the possibility of more than one current tenant that's interested in this development, but it's to accommodate it as warehouse space. If we could scroll down, please. As you can all see, the conditions of zoning that have, or rather, the evaluation and the analysis of zoning, there is not anything that impacts. Thank you. There's not any impacts to schools or on wetlands on this, on this particular application. Can we scroll down a little bit more, please? The, keep going. The current conditions, the land is undeveloped at this time. We do recommend some buffers be put in place, particularly against the church that is in existence, as you can see on the out parcel of the concept plan, and also. Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And along the front edges as well as to protect the agricultural property and the rear of the property. It is the recommendation of staff that we leave as much undisturbed buffer as possible, but also this is a development which does incur warehousing that does mean truck trafficking. There will be some disturbance that does occur, and so it is the recommendation of staff as presented.
Where is the entrance? Is it going to be on Jackson or is it going to be off Wallace?
It's off of Jackson, and there's also an additional entrance off of Wallace to come back to Jackson.
So.
So traffic, if I can get the concept plan pulled up, please.
So this is Wallace and this is Jackson.
So the entrance, as you can see, the main entrance would be in the front of the building along Jackson Road, and there is an alternate entrance on Wallace.
But all the trucks will be entering on Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Kelly, that, the way that this is, this concept is situated, is it going north to south? I mean, if we're looking at this, because when I'm looking at Jackson Road, in my mind, I'm thinking Wallace Road is actually traveling north.
Right. This is, this is oriented with east to the top.
Okay, yeah.
So there should be a northward, northward arrow, I believe, at the top of the page.
Slide it just a bit.
So there's your north facing arrow.
So, so, yeah, you know, stick figure.
I understand. That's, that's why we require it on the concept plan.
So there is that little tiny triangle of wetland there, but that, this isn't going to interact with that at all.
It doesn't impact it, no, sir. Because of the buffering.
So the church is the actual building that you're requesting the 25-foot buffer.
70-foot buffer.
70. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm, where, where am I seeing 75-foot buffer?
70 is in the staff conditions.
Okay, because on the, okay. Undisturbed buffer.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
At this time, Commissioner, if it would appease the board to have the applicant speak, and then we can further discuss it of staff.
Is the applicant here? Come on up.
Mr. Stephen Jones.
Good to see you again, Mr. Jones.
Acting Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you as always. My name is Stephen Jones, the law firm of Taylor English Juma, address is 1600 Parkwood Circle, Suite 200, Atlanta, Georgia, 30338. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, HFG Development LLC. Ms. Littlefield laid out the request. This is a rezoning application from AR1 and R2, this is a split zone tract to C1C as opposed to C2, which you'll recall is a less intense zoning district. It is directly adjacent to the Dollar General facility, which is both within Spalding and Butts County. This proposal, this parcel is at the corner of Jackson and Wallace Roads, as you noted, and this view right here is oriented north-south. Next slide, please, Ms. Gibson. This is the zoning map. You'll see, again, it's split zone between AR, R2. The tract to the west is on C2. The tract to the east is C1C, and that's the Dollar General facility. We selected C1C to be consistent with the Dollar General facility. Next slide, please. You'll see here just a better view of, and this is with contours overlay.
That was the topo.
Yep. Next slide, please. Here's the concept plan. You'll see, this is a approximately 300,000 square foot facility with a truck court with the woodland preserve to the northeast, as well as, as Ms. Littlefield pointed out, we've, in conjunction with discussions with staff, put a, as well as the requirements under your zoning ordinance, put a large buffer around the church. Next slide, please. We're proposing slightly modified conditions to your, to the staff recommended conditions for a variety of reasons. We substantially mirror those conditions, but as we discussed with the planning commission, there are a few minor tweaks we'd like to make in order to help facilitate an off-taker. The way that these things hit the market is typically an off-taker is not identified until after it's zoned, and then you go forward with marketing the product to an end user. For that reason, we want to resolve any ambiguity that is giving our current prospective purchasers some heartburn. We want to live with all of the spirit of staff recommended conditions, but there's just some wordsmithing things we'd like to do, and I'll address those. But around the church, we've proposed, yep, thank you, a 75-foot buffer and then, a 75-foot setback, and then a 25-foot planted buffer around the church, so that instead of just the natural forest, we can come in with some evergreens and fresh plantings and make sure that that buffer is adequately maintained and that it's of a evergreen type that will provide the greatest buffer possible. This site plan also proposes some unique characteristics or some unique features for employees on this site. You've got a walking trail. You can't really see it on this concept plan, but it circles around the entire building as well as the, most of the parking lot, and there is an outside kind of recreation amenity area, pavilion, picnic table for employees to go out and have lunch, take a break, things like that. Next slide, please. So these are our recommended proposed conditions. Again, we tried to hew as close to staff's intent as possible, but changing the wording from buffer to setback, just to follow the intent of, of the ordinance that says setback, we're, we're fine installing buffers and, and working towards buffers, but that word buffer in the intent of it, I understand, but our purchasers, our potential purchasers are having heartburn about, well, what is the buffer, especially along the front edge of Jackson and Wallace Roads? So we're fine with the setback, be consistent with zoning ordinance and other things, but a buffer is just, again, a bit ambiguous. So we prefer the word setback, and that is also consistent with the zoning applied to or would be consistent with what's developed at the Dollar General facility. We're also proposing, consistent with staff's recommendation, condition number three, a 25-foot buffer along the northernmost property line. That's to protect and distinguish between the agricultural zone property to the north, that's Mr. Wallace. That also goes to condition number four, which is preservation of the natural wooded area that the commission was looking at in that, in that wetland area, preserving that to also ensure that the end product does not intrude upon that topographically challenged area as well as that wetland area. Number five, also mostly consistent with staff's recommendation, to plant trees along the parking lot as shown on that concept plan. Six is, is exactly, as in the staff report, night sky friendly parking lot lighting, as well as we just wordsmithed condition number seven to make it clear how the road improvements will be determined. The, your staff asked us to consent to doing road improvements along Jackson and Wallace Roads, to bring those up to county standards at the time that the LVP is done, so we just, again, tailored this condition to make it clear for our off-takers that that would be determined at the time of land disturbance permit by the Public Works Department. So, again, we're consenting to it. We just need some tweaks to make sure that our purchasers and their due diligence don't have any heartburn about the conditions. And then finally, there's a recommended condition number eight, which is not here, which would require the final site plan. And then finally, there's a recommended condition number eight, which is not here, which would require the final site plan approval to come back before this board for final approval. The planning commission struck that condition at request. We had asked that you do the same. The problem with that condition is there's no procedural mechanism under your code for that review, and that's also not a requirement that's been imposed on other comparable developments, so it puts us at an economic disadvantage. And that also gives purchasers a bit of a heartburn, because they look and they say, okay, well, how is that considered? How is that done? What's the procedural requirement for that? And we've had to say, well, there's none in the code, and so just that one condition of, well, it comes back before BOC, it just, it's hard to underwrite that. And so, and also, it, again, it's just not consistent with other projects, so it's a economic disadvantage as well as a bit onerous on the end-user. So with that, again, we think it's a great proposal. It meets your future land use map. It meets your comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the zoning of surrounding properties. It's also consistent with rezonings of this board that is previously taken in the area, as well as in the comprehensive plan employment areas. So with that, we'd ask that you approve this application, consistent with your staff's recommendation, consistent with your planning commission's recommendation, but with the applicant's proposed conditions, so that we can get this project sold. The ultimate goal is to drive economic development and bring industry into the employment centers, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And to do that, what we're getting feedback from the market on is that we just need to wordsmith some of those. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer those now. Mr. Chairman, if I could reserve the remainder of time for rebuttal if necessary?
Sure. Is there anybody here to speak from the community on this project?
Nobody signed up.
No one has signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Board, what do you guys think?
I, I, I do have questions. I have questions because I, I have a concern about truck traffic that will be coming in onto Jackson Road from Highway 16. There is always, already one entrance, and I'm not sure how many feet that is away, but you know, on the concept plan, you can see that there's an entryway into the Dollar General store. One of the main complaints we had when, when the Dollar General development came in was the amount of traffic that is on that road and the subsequent truck traffic that ends up down at McDonough Road and Jackson Road. It's, it, that problem has not gotten any better. It's a place for trucks to get from one place to the other, if, you know, 75 is jammed up. So, I have a real concern about the access for this property being on Jackson Road. I know that there's an entryway on Wallace Road, and, and you talked a little bit about the developer being willing to do some road repairs or road changes to accommodate that. Couldn't they do those same things on Wallace Road to accommodate the truck traffic on Wallace Road?
We're proposing and consenting to staff's recommended conditions to improve both roads along the property frontage. And the, you'll see the truck court is actually on Wallace Road. The employee entrance is on Jackson. There's a drive coming from.
Wait, wait, wait. The truck entrance is on Wallace or Jackson?
Good, well, the truck court is predominantly on Wallace, but you've got a drive from Jackson through the employee parking lot back to the main truck court.
Oh, the trucks aren't gonna enter from Jackson Road there?
They have both options. That was one of the considerations of the site plan. Ms. Gibson, if you mind zooming in. So you'll see the truck court in the southern, south, I guess that's southwestern portion of the property, and the employee parking facility is in the, the western portion of the property. And then there's also a truck court towards the southern portion.
So Wallace and Jackson Roads are, are different. Jackson was built and paved.
For car traffic.
For, well, I mean, but anticipating bigger, heavier lumber trucks and this kind of thing.
Right, but staff's recommendation, I didn't mean to interrupt, please forgive me. Staff's recommendation is that the developer actually improve both Jackson and Wallace Road, so they will come up to heavy truck traffic standards.
So not just the sides, but the actual road itself?
The road itself. We will be improving the county road to accommodate.
What does that mean in English?
It means they're gonna, they're gonna take it down to the base and do super paving for the Wallace Road and the Jackson Road area to ensure that we don't have issues moving forward with those heavy trucks.
Did Dollar General do that?
They did not.
So, so, yeah. My understanding that there was supposed to have been some, some management for the road, and obviously it's supposed to be, we can't see it on here, but there are supposed to be a, an egress lane, you know, and we were also told that trucks wouldn't come out and turn to the right. And that is my concern, is that vehicles coming out and not going back out to 16, or attempting to come back down Jackson Road toward town. That part of the road is not gonna be improved. You can't stop truck traffic once they, they're driving. So what we're saying on the front side is conceptual, but in reality, you're gonna go the shortest distance that it takes for you to get there, and that doesn't mean going all the way back up Wallace Road.
How can that be prevented? I think, can we?
Well, we could, we could make it no through trucks, except for that corridor that just got improved, and say, we will write you a ticket if you turn this way. You have to go to 16 and come up and down 16, which is not two extra minutes. It's not even, you know.
Yeah, Dollar General improved only one part of the, half the road and their turn lane. They didn't improve the other half. And the.
Does that include curb and gutter, or you just, we're gonna fix the road? So I'm trying to get a specific on what that looks like. Will there be sidewalks in front of the building?
We would welcome your input on that.
I mean, that's what we've said about every development that we have, so, and I mean, I know Kelly said that it's not written in ink, but as a, we can say that, because we're saying it for everybody. But my, my other biggest concern is that that church has been there a long time. The people from that church were here when the people for Wallace Road came and had concerns about it, and I, I've been to that church, it's been some years. It is very much treeed up, and I feel funny about you taking everything down and putting some Leyland cypresses that will take 10 years to grow and maybe. So, I have a problem with you cutting the trees down, that is already, there is a vegetative barrier there, and then you planting something that will grow up to be what we think might be a barrier, because it is clearly, you know, this has been, this was an issue on the front end.
I agree.
The property right next to Dollar General, is that Dollar General property? Because I would be concerned that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that's the property line there between the two.
Okay, so that actually is Dollar, C1C, that's Dollar General. So we're really not worried about having to worry about any industrial, anything industrial on that side. So, yeah, that would be my concerns, is any truck traffic, traffic that will be coming east, and what the actual road improvements would look like. I mean, it's great that they got a walking trail out there, but you know, we're, we're trying to set a standard in terms of where, what we want things to look like on our main thoroughfares when people are developing and building.
Well, the, the stipulation, the commission is that they would have to, when the land use, the land disturbance permit is hat-like comes, it's at that moment, whatever standard we've set, that's what they have to raise the road to. So if we, we don't have to define it right now, we can say, whatever it is, it's gotta be this level, because that's what the condition says, is when they actually come for the land disturbance permit.
Have you been out there recently? Ain't it been clear cut all the way around it already?
I don't think so.
Across the road, at least, I mean, something.
Across the road is residential property.
I mean, I, I just remember I, I rode through there not too long ago, and I, I thought the church was almost stuck, stuck up by itself up there. A little line of trees around it.
Google's still got it surrounded by forests.
That's fine. I'm sitting here looking at it, it's Google, but I mean.
I, I. In a previous life, I was an astronomy major, so I always worry about lights. But, so I like night sky friendly, but I'm, I'm more in this situation concerned, because night sky friendly is not a requirement in the rest of the Jackson stuff. That's gonna be a freaking beacon. But the, the lights going into the church, and the lights going into neighboring properties. I know it says the lights can't go into the roads. But, you know, road, maybe roads or neighboring properties should be taken into account. I mean, and if it's not going into the roads, it's not gonna go into the neighborhood properties. I don't think that's too big of a ask. And I, maybe there is some wordsmithing that we can do for the, the buffer, right? But, but I agree, the idea of bulldozing the whole thing. I don't think there's any, to, to implant something is sort of silly. Like, I, I don't know how we phrase that better.
Well, it, let me address all the concerns in reverse order. Is that okay? So the buffer around the church, it's, I think that we could leave part of it undisturbed, in like a 25-foot, but within that 70-foot setback, there will be, have to be some grading and clearing activities. But once after construction, you could go back and you could impose a condition that you put. 10-foot strip with. Yeah, a 10-foot strip with evergreen trees that will grow to a height of 30 feet, so then.
Beyond the initial 25-foot buffer.
Correct. So you'd have 25 and then a 10, so Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, to your concern, though you'll have a buffer that will stay there, and then you're gonna have a planted buffer outside that, so you get best of both worlds.
I can live with that.
And then to your other, to your other concern, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, is about truck traffic that's not getting pushed to 16. What we can do at the time of construction plans and designing is impose traffic control devices at those egresses that push the truck traffic back to 16. So the trucks can only take a left out at actually both entrances, so then they'd be pushed to 16.
So would that be something that we would have to do in terms of the traffic control?
It could be both. So they could make it so that they can only take left turns leaving, right? So that they have to go towards 16, but if they took a left turn off of Wallace, they're gonna get to a four-way stop. So then we could put a wall of no-through trucks, go-that-way, you know, signs. At that point, we will write you a ticket if you turn any way but, but left.
Yeah, that is my, would be my biggest concern with that.
But they, but they could route everyone as they exit left, but they would get to that four-way stop where we would have to put up a barrier of, of sign. We wouldn't want to put a physical traffic control device at that intersection, because that would stop everyone from turning, and that's not the goal.
So, so Wallace Road goes straight back over to 16, does it, it goes directly back to 16, doesn't it? Or no? Or there's a side road?
It goes, yeah, it goes.
So, so, I mean, not saying that they can come off Wallace Road and go straight back to 16, but certainly my concern would be wherever they're able to do the road repairs that, that, you know, we're making sure that the trucks are not running off the road and tearing up the shoulder. You know, there's a traffic island, so that trucks coming in and trucks coming out can miss each other. Those kinds of safety things are, I think, will be important, but if we can keep that traffic from going back into town on, on Jackson Road, I'm, I'm good with it.
Would you like me to go back to our proposed conditions, and then we can kind of work through them one by one?
Yeah.
Ms. Gibson, would you mind second to last slide?
Do we have a copy of your proposed conditions, or we just only have the ones that you?
We have them in the file.
Okay. And, and your, the proposed conditions, you have this in the staff report, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
And you did say, you did say eliminate the eighth condition, did you say that?
And staff is in agreement with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. So if we could work off this one, if that's agreeable to the board, and just march through them and make modifications from the floor to anything that you may have heartburn with, and then Ms. Gibson could note those on the record? Is that it?
So we're good on six, no questions, right? Night sky lighting.
I, I, it's a, and aimed away from public roads, and I would, I would just say, public roads and adjacent properties. That way it's, yeah, the intent is to keep the lights on their property. That means the church too. You know, we don't disturb anybody at Dollar General either.
I, I don't have a problem with lights hitting the road, because it's very dark out there. But I do have a problem, and I mean, I don't know if the church is gonna be out there, somebody's gonna be sleep, trying to sleep at church at night, but, you know, church is usually not at night, so.
Well, I.
Not a huge thing necessarily to have. I, I see how you got your head going down, so I'm gonna just be quiet.
No, you're fine.
The idea with the lighting is if, if there is, if it's, there's enough of a buffer, there's enough trees, there's whatever, like, you can, you can pretend that there's not a giant warehouse right there.
Right, okay.
But if lights are coming through it, we can't even fake like it's nothing. But if the lights are turned so that they're not going into these trees for no reason, it doesn't, there's no reason to shine the lights on the trees, but if the lights have to be bent like this, so that they're not hitting those trees as well, then the people in the church, the people across the road can go, yeah, that warehouse is over there, it doesn't even bother us.
Commissioners, if I may, on the lighting, the reason that the lighting condition is in your staff report is a recommended condition is because currently you do not have a lighting ordinance of any kind to regulate any lighting whatsoever, except inside a subdivision.
Yeah, which is why it's in every single one of these things, because there is no overarching rule for it.
So, so as far as the lighting is concerned, we, we use that kind of generic term. There is, there is actually a definition of it. There is a legal definition, but it's, it's become somewhat of a generic term on the, on the night sky friendly lighting, is to maintain not only the lights are to be oriented into the development, but also so that this development is not an impact, and it's not a harmful impact to adjacent residential property owners. Because while this is an industrial corridor, and it is future land use designated as an industrial corridor, we don't want to upset and negatively impact the other residents that are currently living out there and who are members of the Spalding County community as well.
That's true. Okay.
Is there any, how do we wordsmith number three?
You go, and then I will.
So that's the, that's the property, that's along Mr. Wallace's property?
At the north end?
Yeah.
Well, well, I guess really two is the more important one. Because there's really nothing, I guess, to the north. Well, can we go back to the map? How close are we? But where's that house?
It's a, it's a piece away.
Oh, we're not even getting to the lake here, right? There's a couple hundred feet. Yeah. Yeah, I'm more worried about number two, like the barrier of the church. Because I get you have to like grade and whatnot because of the topographic situation you're in, but like. I, I, I hate to, to bring up sore subjects, but there, there was a time when we reached a conclusion with someone to have a planted buffer that was, like approved by staff, or like, you know, instead of getting the minutia and like writing it down, saying like, I just remember going out somewhere with Newton and trekking through green space that wasn't green space, future, future proposed green space. Is there a way to, to not say, well, it has to be this kind of tree, and not get into the weeds of it, but like, the intent here is that you can't see this giant warehouse from the church. There'll be trees there.
I love the fact that, I would like to point out that I have a big smile on my face, and I'm nodding my head, and it's making the applicant nervous. So what, what I would propose, the condition to read, is that the buffer that's planted there, if, if they are amenable to adding another 10-foot in addition to the 25-feet, is to make it an, a, what did I write down? The landscape strip to be a mix of evergreen and deciduous hardwoods with no more than 30% of one species.
Don't we have specific, like, density for trees that we have to have planted, or is that only in a subdivision?
That's only in a subdivision.
Okay.
There is not a density requirement currently on your industrial developments, and there's not a, there is a screening requirement in your buffers, but there is not for plantings. My recommendation has always been to err on the side of a mix for two reasons. We, I, I, staff cannot control the weather, and I cannot control the adverse impacts that, I know, I'm sorry. Staff also cannot control the adverse impacts of what fuels may do, may or may not do, what emissions requirements are on various vehicles. A lot of different variables that go into industrial developments, so we always recommend no more than 30% of one species. That way, if they, if they plant magnolias, which are considered air purifying, or if they plant loblollies, you've got a mix out there, and you've got a good 60% chance, or 66% chance, that those trees are going to provide enough screening over time.
So, but, but we know, I think he kind of mentioned, like. So, but, but we know, I think he kind of mentioned like slayland cypress is, we know that that's a fast-growing tree. It can grow seven or eight feet in a year. And clearly part of what we're trying to do is not only just to buffer, but to screen the church off, so. So will you have a, when they bring you future plan, concept plan, they will show you what the landscaping plans are?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm.
So typically, those measures are done at the land disturbance part of, part of the process. And the reason being is because, um, they're so, the, the landscaping tends to be very site-specific. We do sit between the two largest watersheds in the state, and whenever we have properties that are closer to that watershed, you want to manage the impact of what's being done on the property as much as you can with the landscaping.
Okay.
Um, and, and that's the simple reason why. Doing it as a condition without knowing the soil quality out there, also doing it as a condition mandating specific species at this point in time, I can't tell you what the final outcome of exactly where their building is going to be because we've not done the final soil analysis. I mean, they may actually be able to find the volcano in Georgia if that's the case. So I don't want to box in the developer to the point where they can't develop this property because we're in demand of specific species, whether cherry trees, bay trees, et cetera.
Okay. As long as it will come back to you and you can kind of look at placement and then possible, um, tree types, I'm good with that.
All right, so, we, we're all good there?
Yeah, twenty-five-foot undisturbed plus a ten with the mixture of species, no more than thirty percent one. For a total of thirty-five.
So that's number two?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-five undisturbed, ten planted, and then seventy setback within that.
So the seventy-foot setback that, that is going to be along Wallace Road and Jackson Road is just a landscape setback?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's just looking pretty.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's not just to look pretty, it's also to protect it aesthetically as well. Um, with, with an appropriate landscape plan that's conscientious not only of the truck traffic, but it's also towards the agricultural bosom property that is out there. Um, with, when we talk about setbacks and we talk about those kinds of things, you don't want it to just be, again, to Commissioner Dutton's point, you don't want it to specifically look like a warehouse just got dropped in the middle of everything. You want to be intentional about that type of development. And once we have a set precedence, we can move that down the, down the road as well. In other words, be the people that we want everybody to look like.
Really good development has come in. Our, you know, the Lakes at Green Valley is just this model. And it's so much of a model that the people, the, the, the private sector folks that bought the land next door came in and said, hey, hold us to the high standard of eco-friendliness that it's already got. We, we like that, we want to self-impose that here so we can continue what's happening without the government having to subsidize it like we did with the, the Lakes at Green Valley. I mean, it's, it's incredible if you can, if we set this high ki- high bar, people will continue that high bar because that's what, that's what the buyers want, the people, they want to be able to see, hey, we're not some evil polluting corporation, we, this is what we do. So, I, I, and we're the ones here in Spalding County that are setting that bar. We're the only eco-friendly industrial park in the southeastern United States. Like, I mean, and yet, that's under such demand, it's sold out now, you know what I mean? All right, where are we going? Uh, is there any others that we want to adjust, Wordsmith, Tinker with? Okay, then is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
Um, I was just looking to see if there was anything else. Okay, what, what, what do we do in terms, nobody asked, and I know y'all get tired of me talking about this. What do we do in terms of moving people in front of this facility? Are we gonna have folks walking on the side of the road, or the road improvements gonna, adjacent to the property?
Well, again, the number seven here says, as determined by the Spalding County Department of Public Works during the land disturbance permit process. So at that moment, whatever the standard we have set is, is what they're gonna have to abide by. We don't necessarily have to set that standard right now.
But in the past, we have had to physically require that, that sidewalks will be on roadways adjacent to where the development is. So, so does that mean on Wallace Road, or does that mean on Jackson Road? Or does that mean on Wallace Road and Jackson Road, because you do have two entryways?
Well, this says they're gonna be responsible for both, and if we say, you know, land disturbance means you gotta put a sidewalk down wherever you're doing it.
It, it, what, what, what are you feeling about that? Yeah.
So I have, I have two schools of thought on this. The first one is, is that the applicant has agreed to do an internal walking trail that will be accessible for pedestrian access. Um, I do think it would behoove us to interconnect that with the sidewalks along Wa- um, Jackson and Wallace up to the church. Um, and the reason being is because they've agreed to bring both of those roads up to a truck traffic standard, which is a pretty high standard in terms of asphalt.
So the community will be allowed to use a walking trail that's connected to their amenity area? Or is that just for employees only? I'm just asking.
I think the amenity originally was geared for employees only because they don't have an in-user tenant. I don't think that the applicant is, is prepared to offer that up for the public, simply because, right.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's a way that we could require that.
No, I'm not saying in terms of that, I was just asking. I mean, it's in a community that pretty much has nothing.
Right.
So, I, you know, okay.
All right, do we hear a motion then? As the chair, I get to ask for one instead of trying to make it.
Our motion, uh, I would like to make a motion to approve, oh, Lord, let me see how I can read this.
Application twenty-two oh-two Z?
Uh, application twenty-two oh-two Z, um, which is a rezoning application from AR-one and R-two to C-one-C with the following staff conditions. One, there will be a seventy-foot front setback along Wallace and Jackson Road. Two, there will be a seventy-five-foot setback and twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer on the subject, subject property, property line that is shared with the church parcel, TPN two-one-six zero-one-zero-seven, with an additional ten-foot of added planted vegetation.
Right.
Uh, number three, there will be a twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer from the subject's property northernmost property line. Four, did we say four? Okay. Four, as listed, with no changes. Five, trees shall be planted to provide screening of the parking lot, similar to those shown on the applicant's illustrative, uh, concept plan, dated one-fourteen-twenty-two, and labeled as project number CE-one-oh-eight. Six, lighting shall be night sky-friendly and will be aimed away from public roads and private property. Seven, the developer will be responsible for any improvements, any improvements of the por- to portions of Wallace Road to his property entrance from the intersection of Wallace Road and Jackson Road, and along his property line.
Up, up to and including his entrance.
Say, say again?
Up to and including his entrance, so not just to the entrance, but like.
Okay.
The full span of the entrance.
Uh, to his property, up to his property entrance from the intersection of Wallace Road and Jackson Road, and along his property line on Jackson Road, bringing those portions of such roads into compliance with the county's current standards for the county roadway system as determined by Spalding County Department of Public Works during the land disturbance permit process.
And strike number eight.
And strike, condition number eight.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, having a motion duly seconded, is there any discussion?
So as far as the no-through truck signs, that's something we do, we don't.
We would have to. Yeah. Any other discussion?
Commissioners.
All right. Yes? Do we read those outright, do we?
Two points of clarification.
Okay.
And I'm going to inflict pain upon ourselves in one.
Okay, okay.
On the first one, uh, number two, I think we said, uh, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, I think you read seventy-five, but did you mean seventy?
Seventy-foot setback with a twenty-five-foot.
Planted.
Undisturbed buffer.
Right.
And a ten-foot planted buffer after the land disturbance is completed.
And then, uh, now it comes to self-inflicted pain. Your tur- the turn lanes, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, that you talked about controlling the truck traffic to roll out to sixteen, do you want to do that controlled access to left outs only?
We could add that to number seven, that is, is essentially, um, so you'd have to.
So that was your concern.
Okay.
Well, he said no, not the signs, but to formulate.
Right.
It'd be a traffic control mechanism.
Parliamentarily, though, in order to do that, we have to make it a, a motion to amend this motion to include a condition eight that says that they'll be responsible to for a physical build-out, traffic control devices on both entrances so that trucks can only turn left out of both their entrances. And I.
So that's the eighth condition.
That motion has an amendment to.
Technically, it's number nine because you stripped number eight.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so that'd be, that'd be condition number nine.
I amend my motion to.
Well, so I, I.
You're making a different motion?
Yeah, I've made a, a motion to amend your motion, which my amendment needs a second.
Second.
Okay, now we have to vote on the amendment first. And then we will vote on the main. Everybody understand, is there any more discussion on the amendment? We good? Does that, everybody understands what we've written down here in, in the sky? Okay, hearing, hearing no further discussion, uh, all in favor of the amendment to the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? All right, four to one. Now, is there any more discussion on the now amended motion to approve? Hearing none, all those in favor of.
Go ahead.
Of the amended, of the amended motion. Okay, uh, all those in favor, say aye? We're, we're, so that was, so we had to vote on the amendment to the motion? Now we've amended the motion to include the left turns? And so now we're voting on the amended motion. All right, uh, any other discussion on the, on the amended motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the now amended motion, say aye? All three hands, uh, all those opposed, great. Four to one.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, okay.
All right, um, item number two on the agenda this evening is the final plat for subdivision twenty-two zero-six Turkey Run. Allen Mobley owner, thirty-three forty West Macintosh Road, approximately one-hundred-ninety-nine-point-six-nine acres, located in land lot three of the third land district, requesting approval of a twelve-lot final plat located within the AR-one district.
I believe staff's up first.
Yep.
Staff?
Waiting on my staff report.
Now, what's the West Macintosh, but what's the crossroad here?
There's no staff report attached.
Pull up, pull up the final plat. So leave the vicinity map up for right now, but zoom in just a little bit, please. There we go, all right. So this is a site as it's proposed, this has passed, uh, the preliminary plat phase. The only conditions that staff had in recommendation and review of this were, um, the hydrants and also the water flow testing. Um, that has since been determined, and the fire hydrants have been, um, properly installed. No, excuse me, they're to be installed before a building permit can be issued, pardon me. Um, so it's pending approval of the final plat. Uh, the, this is the configuration that is proposed by the applicant, if we can scroll down a little bit to the next page, please. There we go, zoom back out, please. These lot, these lots are proposed to be, um, in excess of an average of ten acres. Um, most of them are less than that. However, um, due to the nature of the creek that's running through the rear of the, the, uh, road adjacent lots, they are proposed to be rather large. Um, there's been a significant amount of interest already made on these lots. However, um, the parcels to the rear are, um, forty-three, and the, uh, lot three is forty-nine. So, uh, this is in response to our current subdivision ordinance, and the way that it is written, and it does comply with it. The applicant is present, and as stated earlier, the applicant's met all of the conditions except for the hydrants being installed. Those will be installed again prior to any building permits being issued. These will be single-family lots, incidentally. Be prepared.
I'll be good. Allen Mobley, two-sixty-two Mobley Road. Uh, it's basically a continuation of what we did on the east and west side of this track. This track was four-hundred acres, and this is the final track on that site. And basically, it's the same, that's what we did on the other two tracks. Two thousand square foot minimum, although most of the houses are gonna be larger than that. Any questions?
Uh, I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so every single one of these properties is going to have a road cut, a driveway cut?
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, I, for me, that's a little bothersome because how many, how many feet apart are we, we're talking about? And, and on Macintosh Road, which, West Macintosh, which, once you pass first assembly, people are going fifty-five and sixty-five. So my concern is that, I know that we have an ordinance that says that if you have more than five or six separate lots, it's supposed to be a subdivision, not a minor subdivision. So this is, to me, this is going against what it is that we have said that we wanted to do all along. We wanted to stop having multiple driveway cuts. And if this is a full subdivision, how are we, how are we achieving that?
So as.
Without causing due hardship on the existing traffic that's already there.
As your subdivision ordinance is currently written, it does not require a new road cut whenever you have a major subdivision. It, there's not a requirement for that. There is an option, but there is not a requirement. And as, as stated earlier, this is a final plat, not a preliminary.
So, so you're telling me that for what reason? Because you're saying that there's nothing we can really do to this? I mean, speak English for me.
If, if the final plat, if, if the preliminary plat complies with the requirements of subdivision ordinance, then it's supposed to be approved. If the final plat complies with the requirements and the direction of the preliminary plat, then it needs to be approved.
So how can that apply to that when we have, clearly have an ordinance that says in a subdivision, if there's more than four properties, you can't have all of these road cuts?
It doesn't say it's required.
The new one does.
But if it doesn't say that it's required, then doesn't that mean we have an option?
The new one will.
To have them to not have so many curb cuts?
This, this is a minor subdivision because it does not require any new road construction, and it doesn't require any changes or entries, entries for a public road into the property. And Allen is the beneficiary of regulations and requirements that allow flexibility, particularly when you're dealing with larger lots. So the bottom line to this is, this is a minor subdivision. It has been through preliminary plat approval and approved, and y'all, we have already issued at least one or two building permits out there for what appear to be about three thousand square foot houses.
Yeah, that's the seven to the east of this, right?
So why are you gonna bring it to us if you already issued a building permit?
Because the state of Georgia says that you're required to approve final plats.
And our ordinance says that you are the body that approves the final plat.
But, but define for me what a minor subdivision is again?
Uh, it is essentially, this is paraphrasing, Lynn, but it's essentially a subdivision that does not require any roads or additional infrastructure in order to be developed.
So that is not the, the, the definition I remember Chad saying to me. It was if you are, if you divide a, a piece of property up into more than four lots, or more than five lots, it is considered a subdivision.
It is a subdivision.
Right, so that means that it.
It's a subdividing.
It is a minor subdivision because it does not require the construction of a new road.
So a major subdivision means that there needs to be a road going into it? Okay, so I'm, I obviously did not understand that.
That's okay.
And that.
Here's, here's how I'm looking at this one. We've got effectively two hundred acres. Everywhere else in the county, people come and go, hey, I want to put eight hundred lots on this two hundred acres. There's going to be seventy townhomes and some, you know, duplexes and I promise they're going to be great. Whereas we've got somebody now coming and saying, I'm going to build twelve houses on this two hundred acres, like the seven I'm building right next to them, that are big, deep-set in, nice houses, because I live in this community too. I think this is the stuff that we want to fill up Spalding County with. You know what I'm saying, we want bigger lots, I mean, ten acre lots. You know, we want bigger houses, we want single-family. I mean, we might not like all the curb cuts or whatever, but, you know, compared to, this could be four hundred townhomes coming and asking, you know what I'm saying, like
Well, I would hope that we wouldn't approve four hundred townhomes.
No, I agree.
But my point simply, yeah, my point being is that for, for, for this development, obviously, this is the most prolific way to develop this. And I'm not saying anything against it, I'm saying that we're on West McIntosh Road, which is a highway. And we're going to put additional twelve road cuts, that's, that's, that's my whole thing, nothing against what he's going to build.
And you clarify the definition of the subdivision, that's what I think that was a big thing.
But there, there really are on there, I drive that, that's how we get to Peachtree City all the time, so.
It's McIntosh comes off, this is a relatively rural road.
Yeah, there's hundreds of curb cuts of houses coming off of this.
From nineteen forty, I mean, Highway ninety-two.
If we can take it back up to the vicinity map, please?
West McIntosh goes off to the left of ninety-two, right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
So how far down are we?
A good, a good ways because
Oh, three, four miles.
Also, Cheatham Road is the connector up.
So I was thinking up closer, okay.
It's okay, that's fine.
Up closer, it's just nothing but curb cuts, houses, pop, 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 pop.
We have always allowed
There's one little minor subdivision there.
Particularly with larger lots where there is no road being cut. It has always been identified as a minor subdivision. It is a subdivision because it's a division of the property of an existing lot of record into, I think, five, five parcels? Total of five parcels, I would mean taking a lot and adding four more. But it is a minor subdivision because we do not have to have and you're not dealing with a new road.
Okay.
So I guess what Chad was saying was right, though, I mean, that's basically what you're saying, that he's saying what's the information that Chad was giving us.
But I understood it wrong to mean that, that if you have a subdivision and it's more than five lots, there should be a road into the subdivision because you've got more than five lots.
We don't have that as a requirement, no.
Not current.
All right, um, is there anyone here? Anybody else here to speak on this one? George Scott. Fantastic, what are we thinking, y'all?
I make a motion to approve final, final plat for SD twenty-two oh six Turkey Run, Allen Mobley owner, thirty-three forty, West McIntosh Road, approximately one ninety-nine point six-nine acres, located in land lot three of the third land district, requesting approval of a twelve lot final plat located within a, within the AR one district.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, having a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Y'all, are y'all the ones doing the ones on Ellis Road there, too? Farther out, where like Ellis is, like makes that S?
I'm not building any of the houses.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I hadn't built a house since two thousand fifteen.
Okay, I knew, I knew y'all, y'all used to.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of approving this, raise your hands? Four, all opposed, zero, approve, one.
We should also note the historical moment of this, that Allen's had something approved without any opposition.
I was opposing it.
No, no, I'm talking about public opposition.
Oh, okay, then, make that clear, then. I was opposing it.
Are you for it?
Yes, I voted for it.
With clarification, of course.
Okay. Look, I, I, I think that's a good sign, though. If developers come in and show, hey, we're going to build big quality things and they start that, we, we trust them when they build the next
When they do what they say they're going to do.
Okay, F, other business. All right, we lift from the table, application twenty-two oh eight Z. Bruce Trace Gain, owner, South Tree Commercial. He's the agent for seventy-seven eighty-one Noonan Road, that's approximately nine point six-two-five acres located in land lot fifteen of the first land district. He's requesting a modification on a zoning condition imposed on application seventeen oh six Z to seek a driveway approval from Georgia Department of Transportation on, of Highway sixteen. Is there a motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift.
Have a motion to lift, is there a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor of lifting this from the table, raise your, raise your hands? Four, all opposed? Zero, this is now lifted from the table. Okay. I suppose we should go to staff first.
All right, so this is a request to alter a zoning condition that was initially imposed whenever this application was
It just did it on its own, I don't know why it was recorded.
It's listening to us.
Great, this is just wonderful. Go ahead and pull up the staff report, Ms. Kathy. Hopefully, this will be the staff report that I actually did write. So this is a request to amend a zoning condition that was imposed that required, initially, I believe the applicant submitted that they would be entering from, directly from Highway sixteen, but they have since revised their staff, their, their site plan multiple times and it has been reviewed multiple times. And I'm hoping and praying that this is the final staff report that I actually sent to the applicant. The whole idea of this was that the applicant has, do we have the site plan, please? Concept plan. Yes, thank God. All right, so originally, staff had reviewed this with the entrance being further recessed and directly in front of the proposed building. The staff report that I have actually in front of me recommends a D cell lane being installed there. However, the applicant has since amended their, their site plan and the D cell lane is recommended to, there's not a recommendation of staff at this time. But we do recommend approval of the, of the proposed site plan with a few modifications on the actual building itself and those are screening requirements, paving requirements for the landscape material bays and also an additional landscape strip on the rear of the property as this is a heavier commercial use than the commercial property that is on the other side of that property lot. The applicant is present and I'm sure would love to speak, as we've gone through this so many times. But staff does recommend approval, we recommend improvements to, to Buckeye Road and also some additional screening on the rear of the property as the properties that surround this are agriculturally zoned. This is pretty much the last property before you go into Coeida County. The property that sits across Buckeye Road is, is in fact the last residential property before you cross into the Coeida County line. Prior to that, it, this is a commercial development and we just, we want to ensure that this, as a landscape company, as a landscape supply company, we want to ensure that it's properly buffered, that it's properly screened and that it, it does not have any impact whatsoever on these, on these residents. Mr. Chair?
You said right now, there is a deceleration lane recommended as it, as it currently sits. Was that on sixteen or Buckeye?
No, that deceleration lane, the entrance was proposed to be directly in front of the building itself. And the theory behind that was, as the fall of the land, turning off of sixteen, that commercial trucks would speed up and they would need space and time for, to get out of the way of, of pedestrian or
But the D cell lane was on Buckeye.
Right, and so whenever the entrance was moved closer to sixteen, due to the shortness of that distance and as someone who actually has a CDL, we agree with the recommendations of the engineer since they've moved the driveway up to eliminate that D cell lane.
I, I don't know how that makes a difference, because that's, that road right there has no traffic.
Correct.
I just passed by that, that today and I was thinking that the D cell lane was because they were coming off of Noonan Highway. But, I mean, unless that, is that a dirt road?
No, ma'am, but it is, it is a, it's paved in the interest of no commercial traffic.
Do we, it's gravel right now, we're going to pave part of it.
You're going to pave the portion coming to, the part that's yellow?
The part that's yellow, yes, ma'am.
So, so Mr. Chair, prior to entering into discussion, if you'd like to open the public hearing, staff will yield the floor? Before we get too far down the road.
Yes, so, so before, we were requiring them to do an A, A cell lane going into that property on Buckeye.
A D cell going into the property, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and really coming out wouldn't really matter if they went to the right or the left, they could just pull out of their property, right?
No, ma'am, the original recommendation was to, to access sixteen Noonan Road by the most direct route possible by going down Buckeye.
And that, and that's still a part of this?
Yes, sir.
Because Tri-County's a no-through trucks, too, right?
Correct.
I think it is.
Okay, that's, that's my question.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
No, let's go into public hearing, is there anybody here to speak for or against this?
Some with the applicant. Yeah, my name is Steve Gulas with South Tree Commercial. So what we're proposing here, and I appreciate the time, Ms. Littlefield, who's nice enough to meet with me along with the Public Works Director.
Can we get your address as well?
Yeah, two zero one Prospect Park, Peachtree City, Georgia three zero two six nine, and Steve Gulas, G U L A S. Okay, so yeah, what we're proposing here is what you see in yellow being paved. So, right now, Buckeye Road is a forty-foot right-of-way that is a gravel road. And basically, nobody drives it because as soon as somebody comes in to this one house that's off to the left, their driveway is right there, kind of at the intersection, so they just kind of go right into their house. The other house that's behind it is accessed off Tri-County Road. So nobody really drives this road other than the first, you know, fifteen feet or so, just to get into that one house. So what we're, we're proposing here is that we pave everything you see in yellow. We're going to widen the driveway, or widen the right of road, right-of-way to seventy feet. So the reason for that is, right now, it's forty feet. However, anytime you improve a road, you have to improve it to the, a certain right-of-way. So it's going to be seventy feet wide of right-of-way, which means that our client's going to give up a thirty-foot strip of land to the county. It'll be deeded over to the county for what you see there. So that's not zoomed in, I don't know if there's a way to zoom in or not, but you'll see a thirty-foot dimension there that dashed line represents the right-of-way that would be given to the county. And then when you come in, the asphalt will go left and go straight ahead if there's ever another property there. Right now, this is just one plat, one property. It's possible in the future that they may want to subdivide it, we're not asking to subdivide it right now. He's going to kind of see how his business goes, he may want to build an office building in the front that he leases, leases out one day and it could be subdivided or may not be subdivided. Joey Scanlon was a civil engineer that did the site plan and he took the liberty of drawing a dashed line there just as a potential future subdivision of the land, but that's not what we're asking for now and that would be a different process, you know, a preliminary plat process and so forth, so we're not doing that. We don't want to put a D cell lane in off Buckeye Road and I'm, I'm not quite certain if Ms. Littlefield ended up saying yes or no, but basically, we've got more than a hundred-foot distance, I think there, somewhere in here it talks about a hundred-foot distance, but I just want to be clear. What, what G dot cares about is that you have your entrance, when, once you turn onto the, the side road, the, the minor road, which is Buckeye Road, G dot then wants you to have your driveway at least a hundred feet away from the travel lane, so that you don't just like turn and turn immediately. So we have that, that's what the hundred-foot dimension is for there. And we, we don't see any need for a D cell lane, because once you turn there, you're already going really slow and there's nobody there. So you put a D cell lane in either so that you can slow down, which you already be slowed down, or you put a D cell lane in so that you move out of the way, so other people can continue. And that road, if it was ever continued, would be going into Fayette County and I don't think there's any chance from, at least I'm talking to the public work, you're also public works director, that that road would ever get extended up into, up into Fayette County. So we think we have a good design here, I appreciate what, what Ms. Littlefield was able to work with us on what conditions are good, are, are important for the public good and, and, and to make it look like a, you know, classy operation. So there is a wood fence there now, eight foot, six to eight foot, something like that, wood fence there to screen anything from Highway sixteen Noonan Road. So it starts, it starts behind the building. And then there is another fence that is at what they're calling the rear of the property, which is the right side of the drawing. There is commercial properties over there that are owned by the same applicant, so he doesn't really feel like the fence is really needed there and all that, but there is a house that's still up there in the upper right. It's actually zone C one, but, but it is a house. So thi- this kind of, this is a good buffer because we're, we're actually buffering from one commercial use to another. It's just that this is C one B, which is the commercial with the outdoor storage, next to commercial. So we've got a fifteen-foot landscape strip there and a fence. The reason for the fence there was just because there was a question about whether or not fifteen foot would be enough and, and part of the ordinance, as far as I understand it, yeah, the fifteen foot is plenty, but we agreed to put a fence there as well to make it an enhanced buffer. So, and then at the very top, you have the, the green strip there, that is an existing tree line that we propose to just put shrubs in between the trees to help make it so that it densif, it greens up and densifies the bottom half of that tree canopy. So we think we have a pretty good design here, we, we'd like for you to approve it without any D cell lane. Clients went through major hardship with the G dot on trying to get it on Highway sixteen, spent a lot of money on G dot drawings and G dot changed their mind about it because of a sightline distance, so this is, this is what G dot wanted. They wanted us to just go use Buckeye Road, so we think this is good.
Is there anybody else here to speak on anything?
So you're part of what your plan is, is to give us right-of-way for the full width of the road that you're paving?
Correct, everything you see in the highlighted in yellow will make it a seventy-foot right-of-way instead of a forty-foot right-of-way and, and all of it will come from their land, none, none of it's going to come from the other side. Not going to come from the residential, the thirty-foot strip is coming from
But, but these will be dump trucks coming through here, because that's what is going to pick up all the
Right, yeah, I talked to the client about it, there's basically about two dump, two dump trucks per day that come and then there's about two larger trucks that, with flatbeds that come per week. So like two trucks on flatbeds per week, two dump trucks per, two dump trucks per day and then about thirty customers per day that are just coming with pickup trucks and trailers. I know there, there's something on here about trip generation and I don't really understand the, the trip generation part, but I can just speak to what the, what they experience now. So they own one right now in Sonoya, they'll be, they'll be moving out of Sonoya, they, they leased the land there, this is land that they bought. They're going to be making this the family business here. So they know, they know how many customers they get per day and they have a large, large piece of land where they're at right now, like this. So we expect it to be similar, so it's really, really pretty minimal.
But is your, it is your desire not to have trucks or vehicles traveling on the other end of the road? And is that correct?
Right, yeah, we're going to put a sign, from when I met with Ms. Littlefield, we'll, we'll put a sign that says, trucks turn left or trucks use Highway sixteen, like when they come up. We don't want them to make a right and go down to Tri-County Road, agreed?
All right, what's the rule of the board?
Uh, I'd say we approve this request, let me get the number. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve their request, application twenty-two oh eight Z, requesting a modification on a zoning condition imposed on application seventeen oh six Z to seek a driveway approval from Georgia Department of Transportation, G dot of Highway sixteen.
Uh, I got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Do we have to state the staff's recommendations or is that just included in the application?
It's included in the application.
I just think that, I just drove by there today and, you know, anything that happens on sixteen is just a mess. And when you come off of that roundabout, that's even worse. So if they can get off of sixteen and turn onto another road so they can do their business, it makes ever more sense than, than what we're asking them to do right there, so.
Can we strike number one? Number one is the D cell lane on Buckeye Road.
Right, the new, the new proposal Right, the new, the new proposal that we're approving tonight does not have that, correct?
Correct.
Right.
So the current motion does not-
We're approving a modification, modification to the zoning, uh, condition.
Yeah, if you go, if you go on out, uh, sixteen there and it turn and you get to the Barbie Beach House, I think we need to have a Ken Beach House, I think, on, on this side, alright, that's a big tourist draw, the Barbie Beach House. This is very, thank you, there we go. You never been to the Barbie Beach House? Oh man, you gotta go to the Barbie Beach House.
Yeah, he ain't been over there either.
Huge tourist attraction. Okay.
Barbie Beach?
Barbie Beach House.
Mi, Mr. Chair, if I may, if I may please redirect back to the staff report and the motion at hand.
Is there any other discussion on this? Okay, um, alright, uh, all those in favor of approving this modification, raise your hands? All those opposed, zero, alright.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Alright, approve for zero, okay. Uh, I think that's all we've got tonight, y'all.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Alright, we got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion about the Barbie Beach House? Alright, hearing none?
They don't have a turning line.
They don't have a turning line, but Barbie Beach House, that's right. Alright, all in favor of adjourned, raise your hands? Four, all opposed, stay here, okay. Thanks y'all.
Thank you, Kelly, thank you ma'am.
Thank you, thank you ma'am.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Commissioner, Mr. Commissioner.
You just call us everything. Okay people? Good work Steve, good work, good work Kathy.
So Steve, just be clear, we don't see each other anymore till then.
Thank you.